Good evening. I would like to call to order our September school board meeting. I'd like to welcome any visitors here with us or at home. We thank you for watching and being interested in what we're doing. At this time, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance by Mike Williamson and then the invocation by Dr. Tally.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Before we pray, I'd like to have a moment to think about 9/11. I think almost everyone can remember what we're doing. On that day, personally, I was typing my father's obituary because he just passed on my mother's birthday the day before, which is 9/10. So I'll certainly never forget it. As those planes hit the buildings, as I was on the computer thinking about what to say. But certainly to our heroes that died that day, the people who came to, you know, risk their own life also to rescue people who were victims of families. The impact of it is profound. It's something we've lived through that we're never going to forget. We just can't. And just the pride it made us gain, build and be an American and living in this country, which is so great. Certainly gave us a great appreciation of freedom, law and order that we have. So let's have a moment of silence before we pray to those families and those fallen heroes, patrons. Father, we bless you for this day. We thank you for 9/11. Families that have not forgotten lives lost. God, we just pray that you would put your spirit of comfort around them. Thank you for that sacrifice that we might live free, that we might enjoy our families. We just, God, pray that you would touch the entire world this day, that we never have to live through such an infamous day again. Now, God, we thank you for this meeting. Thank you for your presence. Thank you for this great board, this great community, our teachers who are just doing outstanding job. Our young people that are studying and working hard. God's achieved. We just pray that you would bless this meeting, the decisions, things done. Might be done to your glory in the betterment of this great city that we live in. These blessings we ask to do pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Yanni, do we have any registered speakers? All right, then we're going to move on to Community Focus. This evening, we have Brad Kikuma, the Director of Martinsville Henry County YMCA, and he's going to present something to us.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for having us. I'm going to share an upcoming project that we have with a new facility, but first I want to share what we're already doing with you. One of our signature projects that we do, we've done for probably 10 years, is the first grade Learn to Swim program. So you all bring your first graders during the school day to the Y. We give them a week's worth of swim lessons, water adjustment. I'm not saying that they're fully swimming afterwards, but they have knowledge of water safety, how to be safe around water and water movement. And then they go back to school and we're happy to do that with you all. We also do a Youth in Motion program, which we've done through Patrick Henry before, where the kids learn about self-esteem, bullying and things like that. And they also run. So at the end of the program, they do a 5K that we have, so we're happy to do that. We're also the recreational sport provider for the city, so all city students participate, that choose to participate. We do the baseball, softball, football, basketball and cheerleading that's done, so those are your students. During the summer, we provide summer day camp, which was right down the street, so Martinsville students could participate. And I want to thank you. You have a bus that comes over from the high school and when I see them pull in, I see maybe a dozen high schoolers get off the bus and they play basketball. The kids walk over from the middle school. They have a great time playing basketball and doing their team thing. And the other thing I want to stress is for your students and the parents listening, is for those that participate in the Y, we don't turn away anybody due to inability to pay. So anybody can join the Y. We do have a rate structure, but if someone says, "I can't afford the Y," we find a way. So that should never be a barrier ever for anybody that wants to participate in the Y or its programs. I'm going to do a flyover of this, and so if you have questions asked, because normally this takes like a half hour or so, and I don't want to take that, obviously. But we're looking at a new facility that we actually bought that's right in front of Albert Harris. This is the shopping plaza that holds the Family Dollar at the end of Fayette Street. And this is a design of what it could look like. We have an early learning center in there, splash pads, sport courts. And you can see the splash pad there, which would be for Martinsville Henry County residents as well as Y members. We also put in an early learning center. It would have a separate entrance. It would have infant and toddler care along with preschoolers and would hold, I think we estimated 94. So this would be great for parents that don't have kids that are ready to be at Clearview or elementary school age. We'd have some sport courts that would be lined for pickleball, also basketball and Astro turf, as you see, where you could kick the soccer ball, play lacrosse, whatever you care. This is the layout of the first floor. I'll briefly talk about this and I'll show you the pictures, but it has two pools and three full gyms. We know gym space is a shortage right now, so that's why we put in another one. One of the problems that we've seen in the evening when we have programs in there is those programs take the whole gym up and we have to push the teens out. And we hate to do that. So our commitment here in having three half courts is that teens always have some place to play open basketball. So this is our entrance there. You can see the pool behind there. You can see the fitness center above. Lot of common space where people can hang out, talk, have a sense of community. This is our aquatic center. You can see we have bleachers over to the right. We would love to host Martinsville City School swim meets and swim practice. And we have a rec pool on the other side where kids can play basketball. There's little dumping buckets and things like that for even littler kids. We have a child watch area where parents can check in their kid, work out. The kid can play on a giant playground, maybe a climbing wall, maybe a ninja warrior obstacle course. We also have two multipurpose rooms. This one is, in concept, is a STEM lab where you could do like 3D printing, you could do robotics, you could do musical, different aspects of that. So yet to be determined, but would be great to be able to do some programming that would affect elementary and middle school and high school. And then a teaching kitchen that could also serve food, so individuals can learn how to cook nutritious, healthy meals. This is the upstairs. You can see the, I guess that's lighter green, is the wellness area. Lot of glass up there and two group exercise studios. And then a giant walking track, which is actually one of our most popular things that we have. Once again, you see a lot of open space where people can lounge, talk with each other. We found that coming out of COVID, people wanted to be able to get together and talk. They missed that. We've seen a lot of mental health problems because of the lack of that. And then the track above it and the gym below. And I want to say that was it. I cut out some slides. So it didn't go too long. Can I ask there any questions about the Y?
That track, is that rubberized?
It is, yeah. So one of the worst things for you is if you run on sidewalks, that's absolutely extremely tough. So this is rubberized and we have lots of seniors. Just about everybody loves to use it. You can walk at Jack Dalton or around here when the weather's okay, but as it gets colder or it's blazing hot, especially if you're older, you want to be inside.
Will the pools have a high dive that the students can practice?
No doubt, yeah. It will be a little bit deeper. It'll be like nine feet, but why is it generally not going away from springboards and things like that because of liability?
Thank you for the program. First graders that really enjoyed it, especially grew up in the area, but we did have a lot of memberships. So it's just essential to get those first graders in there, get them out of free water and to actually swim. Cut down on their drowning. That's the biggest issue. So thank you for that. We really very appreciate it.
Yeah, well, we love to do it. One of the things I'll tell you is we did a pilot program before we did it. And I think out of a class of 24, this may be a little bit off, but 22 had never been to the Y and the same amount have never been to a pool. Which is shocking because, you know, if you grow up around a pool, you just assume everybody does. But I'd like to say that this program saves lives and also opens doors for kids that maybe never thought that they could be on a swim team, be a lifeguard. Maybe they won't be afraid when they go to the beach.
What they had last year, right? The young lady, was that sponsored through school or was that?
She's through school. She's a diver.
But she taught the young kids this way?
Yes, absolutely.
I know my, I know one of my friends that's with the NASTO. He's not afraid of water.
Yeah, well, good. And the exciting thing about this facility is it's going to be right behind Albert Harris. Actually, you know, there's a hill that goes down to the shopping center. We put in there stair, excuse me, stairway on that hill to come into the back of the Y, just for that purpose.
What would be a projected timeframe that you guys would?
That's the same thing.
So, you know, we're looking at about two years for raising the funds, possibly three, and then we would break out. So it's still a long-term project, but it's something we can get excited about.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we're going to have tonight, forgive me, we've got two things we're going to add to the agenda and one of them is going to be now. As most of you know and saw in the newspaper, I believe it was Thursday when it arrived in our mail, but now that we get it in the mailbox. It was, there was an article written that did not have all the information apparently on our school system and comparing apples to apples in the article. It was more of an apples to orange and cran apples. And so we have asked that our staff present something to explain to us where US News and World Report would have gotten the information or the lack thereof and why they don't have it. And then it was mentioned in the article that indeed there was not all the information. So that's where, as a teacher, I always wanted to get all the information before we wrote something, so we'd like to just have all the information now since we didn't get that.
Clarity for you.
Yeah, so better pictures.
Might as well.
Mr. Wright, you're going to talk to us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I just thought so. You guys didn't have to grab strain eyes and stare at the screen. So I thought just first, I go ahead and put the sources up here first. A lot of times if you read a research article or a scholarly article, your sources are all at the end, but these are all very free and available places for everyone to see where we got our information. There's the Martinsville Bulletin article at the beginning, then the US News and World Report rankings. And then a lot of information has come out about our school district from the state. They released all of their state scores this past week as well. So it's an interesting time. We were kind of excited to sit down last week and look at some of these numbers when all of this was coming out. So I'm grateful for the chance to get up here. So why is this even important? Parents need to trust us. They need to have faith in our public school system. Students need proper preparation. A student wants to know if they are going to an appropriate school to get trained properly for their futures. Current and future businesses need to know, are we going to be able to put out future business leaders? And it's a competition for enrollment. As Travis Clement says in all of our meetings, these are how many seats we have and these are how many students we have. It's, our funding helps from the amount of students we have. So we would love to have as many folks who want to come to Martinsville City Public Schools come on. We'll take you because we're doing good things. So what does it mean to be the best? You know, I'm looking at your water bottles there. Someone picked those water bottles to buy those. Did they think those were good? You know, everybody has a rating system for whatever it's going to be. There's many ways to rate something or to give grades. And so as a teacher, I like to be very clear in telling my students, this is how you're going to get this grade. So there's lots of different ways to rate anything that's out there. So you've got to know what are the criteria. One of the agencies that gives us feedback on how we're doing is the federal government. They will tell us our pass rates on our tests, straight pass rates, no growth, no anything else. They just care about whether someone passed or failed the test. That's all they care about. So how did we do at the high school with reading, let's say, based on our federal pass rates? There that information is over the past couple of years. You can see it there. And so we're beating the state when it, the state average. Again, this is just pass rate. As somebody who works with English Social Studies across our district, to me, I'm never satisfied with a pass. That's getting like a 55% when we're looking at our state numbers. So sometimes I'm not satisfied with a pass. But that's how we're doing when it comes to our federal pass rate. That's an 85. Then it comes to the state. State numbers will get padded with things like growth, recoveries, reduction in failure efforts, substitute tests, English learner progress. So there's lots of ways that we can try to help ourselves out, look better, as opposed to just a flat, cold pass rate. Keep in mind, 2021 was our first year of state testing after the closing of schools. And so that's how we look right now. So that number is 93% for this year for our high school and of course, reading test now. So you can see a little bit of a difference there between state and federal. So already there's a difference in the criteria between those two agencies. Then we get to the US News and World Report that came out this past week. They have their own criteria. That's fine. That's just the nature of their game. That's what they're going to say. There was a great article that they included on how they got those numbers. So we went through and studied how they figured everything out. This is how you get a good score on the US News and World Report. Again, I was thankful to go through this a little bit in depth. I've always heard these numbers. I don't exactly know what they mean. College readiness, 30%. College curriculum breadth, 10%. State test proficiency, 20%. Under-served, 10%. And graduation rate, 10%. So you can see that they have already skewed their criteria to go into some certain areas. So let's talk about these a little bit. Using the language from their article, college readiness. How do they consider if someone is ready for college? They consider someone's ready for college if you took an AP test, if you took an AP class and you took the test. Okay? So that's the biggest part of that. And the other part of that 30% is if you also earned a qualifying score. So it's not good enough to just take the AP test, which is scored 1, 2, 3, 4. You have to get a 3 or 4. That's how they determine someone's ready to go to college. Now, they also have a college curriculum breadth. This is talking about students who take multiple AP classes and get a qualifying score in multiple areas. So that's 40%, all put together, those first two criteria. With AP tests, taking the class, taking the test and doing pretty well on the test. That's just how they decide to score it. How do we do advanced placement classes at Martinsville High School? Most of the students who are taking AP classes at the high school are concurrently enrolled with Patrick and Henry Community College. They have an instructor who's a Martinsville teacher who looks like the rest of us do. That teacher has a master's degree, so they're allowed to give that kind of college credit. So we have students on our campus getting college credit by taking the class. We also have our ACE program and our Governor's School program where those students are dual enrolled. They actually show up and go to the campus of Patrick and Henry Community College, also receiving college credit from college instructors. Patrick and Henry Partnership provides college credit for passing the course. Our course syllabi have to be approved by Patrick and Henry Community College, so they say, yes, this is worthy of giving college credit. We give you that power. That's with our partnership with them. So the AP exam in this situation is not needed to earn a college credit. And that's how we approach advanced placement classes at Martinsville High School. Spending many years as an AP teacher myself, I know that the philosophy of AP College Board is access to a rigorous curriculum. They truly don't care if you take the test. It'd be nice if you did. They give some awards if the kids do well to them, but they have done so much research that says students will do better in college if they've just taken an AP class. And so we follow that philosophy as well. So here's our enrollment based on VDOE data that just came out last week. We have 161 students who are signed up at Martinsville High School to take an AP course. You can see Facet, Patrick County and Magnavista are there. Now, when you look at the membership of these schools, you can see that we have almost 30% of our students taking an AP class. Patrick County has .58. So the statistics that are presented on how well they did, sure, that's based on four students. You can do a lot with four students if they're, you know, doing well. Wow, shoot right to the top. So when we look at us, our philosophy is we want to get kids in that rigorous course with a trained teacher and a rigorous curriculum. We think we're doing okay when we have that kind of participation from our students from this area compared to those other schools. Next, state test proficiency. How are you doing on your SOL test? US News and World Report says that they're going to put it together based on math, science and reading. Now, here's where this gets a little bit fun too. This state assessment proficiency indicator is either based on 2021 or 1819 or an average of those years. Who knows? I don't know. So it's just interesting to kind of dig into these ratings and see how it's done. We never get any black and white, this is in bounds, this is out of bounds, when you get that kind of stuff. But anyhow, we don't mind taking a state test here in Martinsville. How are we doing in reading, math and science compared to the other schools in our area? Not too bad. I think we're right there in the mix with a lot of them on those scores. Someone may be better here or there, but we're right there in the mix. These are our state tests. So now, also, US News and World Report did it. They said something like, if you don't take those AP tests at the beginning, we'll have some statistical something to make up for that. Who knows if they did or not? We don't know what they did. We already are not operating on 40% of their rubric. State test performance. Now, this one is a little bit interesting. In this case, your total assessment scores are compared with what the US News and World Report predicted for a school with its demographic characteristics in its state. If we take Martinsville High School, look around the state, say, here's what you should probably get. Now, here's another one. It's based on 2020 or 1819 or an average, who knows? Now, this comes from information from VDOE based on school districts that serve populations that are very similar to ours when it comes to race and ethnicity and poverty levels. We decided to put George Washington High School up there, Thomas Jefferson in Richmond and Petersburg High School. I think when you look at us compared to those schools, bring them on. What we can do with our students? Fine. My boss, Dr. Downing, will say so many times, put my staff up against anyone else in the state. I'll show you what we can do. She says that all the time. Those numbers bear that out. Next, with our underserved population. This is again from US News and World Report. This is a measure assessing learning outcomes only among Black, Hispanic and low-income students. This evaluates how well this underserved subgroup scored on state assessments compared with the average for non-under served students among schools in the same state. So this is based on 2018, 19, right before the pandemic. I just put together the numbers on how are we doing with our Black reading scores at the high school, Hispanic and economically disadvantaged. This all comes from the state. And then compared them to the high schools in our geographic area. Again, we're right there in the mix of involvement. Some folks are ahead in certain areas, some folks are below in others. When I know that the majority of our students in our district are Black and we have many economically disadvantaged students and we're hitting it at 85 and 83%, that's not too bad. So graduation rate, last one. Among students who entered the ninth grade in the 2017, 2018 academic year, this measures the proportion of who graduated four years later. So in our school terms, on-time graduations, they graduated in four years. This is straight from the US News report that, that we had 95% graduation rate. Compare that with two others in Henry County and one from Patrick County. So who is the school that rated number one? US News and World Report. This is at the end of the Martinsville Bulletin article. It says it's a little school down in Greensboro, North Carolina. They have a total of 197 students. I mean, Martinsville City is small, but that's small. 48% Asian. It's just the facts. 4% economically disadvantaged. So if you guys want a staff in this district who can do what we do for our students, let us go. We show up every day and do that kind of work with our kids. And let's see some facts that were not in the US News and World Report criteria that we think are kind of important. College and career readiness. US News Report, that's fine. That's their game. They just want to talk about college readiness. We want to prepare kids to go to work as soon as they leave our doors. Industry certification. A lot of these are like a skill. A total credential is more like a path where you might have several certifications that lead into a credential. Then you have students who have earned more than one credential. And then you have a CTE completer, a student who has taken multiple classes and passed an industry standard at the end of it. When you look at what Shawna Hines is doing with that program and what our teachers are doing in that program compared to other schools just here in our geographic area, that's something special. So takeaways. I think that we are definitely competitive on most measures. In no areas are we glaringly low, either compared to this, you know, area schools or schools who serve a similar population of our students. In some areas, we are clearly ahead of other school districts. So it was, thank you for allowing me to come and talk about the work that we enjoy doing so much.
Well, thank you for putting this together. We asked for it after we started seeing things on Thursday. We all talked at some point. I talked to everybody or Dr. Tally did. And so we appreciate that you put this together in a short timeframe and given it to us. There's a lot of information here that I think is very.
Sure. Take it, mull it over. Anything that you want to give back to us on, we'd be happy to answer, talk about any details.
Do you all have any comments?
Carrie, thank you. Thank you for breaking it down for us.
Thank you so much for pulling this information. It just shows again, we've been saying consistently for the past seven years that our kids rank as high as any student. What I really like about this is you pull the current data from the VDOE, but we have nothing to do with the competition. They, as very strict guidelines, they do computations. All divisions, all 133 are graded the same way with every test. It's not a select. You do AP, you don't. You do AP, you don't. It's not biased. And that's the last thing we want from our students, biased, or teachers. And so thank you for being very forthright. And again, proven again, we're one of the best schools in the nation.
One thing I want to ask and make sure that I'm not wrong. It is also my understanding where one reason a lot of our students don't choose to go in and take these tests is most colleges do not require them. Is that accurate with that AP test?
That's correct.
And also, a lot of schools going forward, last year as well as this year, are now saying you don't have to take the SAT. Depending on what school it is, or the ACT. And that's a huge difference from years ago. Where the kids were having to panic and go through all the anxiety to do all those things and have that. They're looking for the basic rigor and your class rank and those items.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
They're no longer need it. And, you know, with the SOL scores being released and now, you know, divisions releasing them, I'm just very excited to report that seventy-five percent or three out of our four schools that qualify have the highest accreditation you can get. That's triennial accreditation. That's the top in the state. So when you have three or four schools meeting then, you hold your head up. So that's multiple years of accreditation for our school division. So really excited, and we will get them all to have a hundred percent.
Well, thank you again for putting all this together. And thank you for the rest of the staff that worked with you.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Because I'm sure it was a group effort. And also, it would be great if we could put this on our website.
Sure.
So that everybody can see the data, they can go in there and look because you are.
Right, because those sources at the beginning are clickable. Those are clickable links they can learn. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, no, and you're also comparing apples to apples versus our cranberries and oranges and bananas. Okay, thank you very much. All right, moving on back to the agenda. I hope you all understand why we wanted to add that and why that was important for everybody to hear and learn. Awards and recognitions. We have the Virginia School Board Association Media Honorable Award. And Dr. Tally, you were going to present that to our honorary.
Yes, she's nine in tonight, but we want to present a twenty twenty-three Media Honorable Award to Ms. Monique Holland from the Martinsville Bulletin. Monique is just a tremendous person. She covers our media. She goes to the events, she's present. She just happens to be out tonight, but she's very present in our schools. Her writing, very much unbiased, and, you know, she talks about the difficult things. And we're really proud to present this award to her this year. And we thank her for all the things that she does to make sure that the events and, you know, things that we're doing in our various buildings, the programs, that they get in play. I noticed a great increase in the number of stories from our different schools involved in the study. The award reads, "The Martinsville City School Board recognizes your fair and balanced reporting on school division and education-related topics. Your work is an aid to this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for the students who attend them." Signed by David Wood, V S B A president, and Ms. Gina Patterson, V S B A executive director. So with great pride that would present this to Ms. Monique Holland.
Thank you. Next, we have Albert Harris School Century Garden. You all made the paper again, and it's wonderful, and we appreciate that. And what an honor that you come up, Doctor.
Thank you. Again, thank each and every one of you all that came out to visit our garden. What that is, the Albert Harris Elementary School Century Garden is an extension of our outdoor schoolyard, or we call it an outdoor classroom. What this garden is supposed to do and is doing is to engage student senses. We have an herb patch, an herb patch that stimulates the sense of smell and taste. We have chimes to stimulate hearing. We have flowers that's growing, sand pit, and colored rocks with messages on them. And they are supposed to, and they do, stimulate the sound, smell, sight, and touch. This garden is used for hands-on learning experiences for children at all levels. The Century Garden is definitely an extension of our program. We already have our monarch butterfly waste station. We have a bee sanctuary, because Martinsville is a bee city. You all didn't know that. So we're a part of the bee city. We have our rain barrels that the water feeds off to help our plants grow. And we also have a weather bane which teaches our children how to read the motters, clocks, and teach them the directions, north, south, east, and west. All of this was made possible through a partnership with the Dan River Basin Association. And our Century Garden was funded and financed by the community foundation that serves Western Virginia. And if you want to know why we have outdoor education, it correlates very well with our science SOLs in grades four through twelve. But I just picked out a few of the correlations with our science SOLs that we utilize. Going all the way back to kindergarten, our Century Garden helps assist in processing life processes of plants and animals. Our first grade, it helps with plant needs, plant parts, animal needs, and animal characteristics. Second grade, it talks about how plants undergo changes. Also, in second grade, habitats will change over time. Third grade, our garden in all of our outdoor classrooms also help children learn about food chain chains and habitats. Fourth grade, again, it continues with habitats and food chains. And then if you look at SOLs in the fifth grade, it helps with classification of plants, vertebrates, invertebrates. And I did put this in for sixth grade, but it's still a fifth grade term, or fifth grade thing that we use. And it's called watershed. Because watershed is a very, very important part of our science curriculum with the Dan River Basin. So that's pretty much our Century Garden. And this was Mrs. Witt's brainchild. So she probably could do a better job of explaining it. But Mrs. Witt is out for about twelve weeks because she had hip surgery. So again, if you haven't come, please come by and visit our outdoor classroom. And you can actually eat the peppers that are planted in the garden. So try your hand at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, thank you. And I know you had a hard time getting the kids out of the sand today. We've got to rev it. And I don't want to, to have a good time.
All right, moving on to the information part of our agenda. Dr. Tally, if you could give us a little information about the first month of school, how things are going?
All right.
We've had a great first month of school, I think. Our safety director said it best. It's probably been as wide as it has with very few incidents. And I'm glad, I think the students were glad to get back, right? The students were glad to get back, and the teachers. I want to thank the teachers and administrators because this could not happen half-assed. They did a lot of planning in each building to get the young people in safe. Again, we saw, as you, a little crying among parents and kids because the students were glad to get back. I want to thank everybody who came over personally, helped out, sent us, carried book bags. Did, you know, a lot of things. Did some coaxing to get the young people in school. And like I say, it was very well planned, very well thought out. We had fewer transportation problems than I think we've had in years. And that was interesting because I always look for people to be left, first couple of days anyway, to parents, get the time, the buses. But we had very few loads. And so most people were picked up. And then after a few days, I think the transition of having equal loads on the bus has kind of smoothed out better. Because, you know, there's a difference between who actually registers and who shows up. I've done several class visits in every building. And I walked with the principal's son, and also I've walked solo a lot. Today I did sixth grade. Today I did Cameron, did a couple of grades at fourth and fifth today. High school, I did D building, English, and foreign language today. I did sixth grade. So I think I covered all the buildings today. And then I did, we looked at some special needs in Calibia. And of course, if you go to Calibia, you're not going to want to leave. They are the darling school. And as the year progresses, of course, they always want to read to you before you go and illustrate that night. We talked to the staff today because Calibia is really cornerstone of what we do. When we teach young people to read at that age level, you're really setting them up for success. So we enjoyed all of that. Lunches have gone well. Shiller says that's been very balanced. And a lot of young people are enjoying themselves in the commons. And it's been a good year now. Not with hot bumps and bruises because we're going to have some. But again, I want to appreciate the administrators and the teachers. We're paying attention to detail, to making sure things are running as smooth as we can because we want young people in class. We want teachers able to teach. We want administrators conducting walkthroughs and going through. We want to coordinate all of that as we get our young people ready. In fact, we've started testing already. Started testing already, and a couple of schools have been testing. And the young people are taking it seriously. And that's only because you're letting them know that it's very serious to stay education. And so again, we're very pleased with the first month of school, opening of schools. Any parents that have questions, again, comment four, three, five, eight, two, one. And I've talked with several parents this year already, as well as at CAMHS and other places. And thank you for really participating in our events. The event's super, always super. And all the sporting events have been developed, all already, football. And young people, again, enjoying themselves. So again, thank all of you for what you do. Thank you for supervising. We're still hiring bus drivers today. That was exciting because, you know, there's a state shortage of bus drivers. Just hired one today, an additional driver today. And if might be something you want to consider, retiring, you might want to drive a bus. I heard somebody else that you're taking license, taking time to try to drive buses. So I used to do it, but I burned up too many clutches. So I don't think you want to drive it again, but Travis, but Mike knows because I think I was driving, yes, yeah. When you were an athlete. But again, we thank all of you for what you've done.
Okay, next we, and thank you for that information. Next, we have Dr. Worrell, who's going to talk to us about National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which is September.
Yes, yes. Thank you all very much. My name is Travis Worrell. I'm a school psychologist. For those who haven't had it, welcome. And it's good to see you guys through familiar faces. Every year, September, we take a few minutes to come together as a community and raise awareness for suicide prevention and Awareness Month. This is the time that we remind people that who might be struggling that they are well alone. The statistics about suicide, especially since COVID, are terrible. Suicide is now the tenth-leading cause of death in the United States, the second-leading cause of death among our young people. Girls have had especially a hard run since COVID, a seventy-six percent increase in suicide rates for young girls. And now girls' suicide rate is more than three times that of our young boys. People in LGBT are struggling with gender issues, are more than seven times likely to try to hurt themselves. And people of color are also struggling now, with young people up to two hundred and thirty-three percent increase in suicidal ideation with young people. So now the suicide rate for girls is over three times that for boys. So we just, we have to pay attention to that, and the statistics are alarming. But the good news is that suicide is preventable. We know that people that are struggling with things, there are certain risk factors we can look for. We know that people have certain signs that they, you know, signs, the things that we can look for. And we know that if we educate ourselves on these warning signs and reach out to those loved ones and connect them with the resources, then we can really save lives. So as members of the school board here and leaders in our community, let's make it our responsibility to make suicide prevention a priority. Let's make sure that our staff and students all have mental health training. And let's reduce the stigma around mental health so that anybody, not just students, but anybody knows when they're having a problem, they can reach out and ask for help. We all have problems sometimes, and it's okay to talk about it. But most importantly, we've got to spread the word that suicide is never the answer. It is a permanent solution to a temporary problem. There are people who care and support is available. One of the major breakthroughs we had last year was the nine-eight-eight number. So instead of calling nine-one-one when there's emergency and having law enforcement show up, we now have a nine-eight-eight number. It's a mental health crisis number. Anybody can call it any time of day. It's free, and it connects you right away to a mental health professional. So hope, help is only a phone call away. So we just put that number out, nine-eight-eight. That's a big breakthrough for us. And lastly, just by standing together, taking action, we have the power to prevent suicide and save lives in our families and in our communities. We got to check on one another. I heard Brad say about the why that, you know, people since COVID are really needing that time to connect. And that's what it's all about. And Dr. Tally knows that. He leads by emphasizing connections with us. So we have to check on our friends and neighbors. We have to be kind to one another. We have to know that everybody's dealing with something. So let's just be kind in our words. Let us make this month the beginning of an ongoing conversation and a commitment to provide hope, help, and healing to those who are struggling. And if you see something that seems off, please say something because it may be that you can really save a life. Thank you.
I want to thank you, and thank you for your work with our young people here, our first line when we're having those issues. And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, consent agenda. We have consideration of minutes from August fourteenth. I will need a motion for that. Just for the minutes, okay? Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor? All right. We also need a motion for the financial report ending in August thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. All right, second? Cody?
Yes, second.
Any discussion about the financial report as it was presented? All right, all in favor? All right, I'm going to add another item, forgive me. We, as a board, had a retreat with the Virginia School Board Association, which they recommend that you do annually, and that was done the end of August. When we're there, we have an opportunity to discuss our board norms and protocols, tweaking them, deciding if we need to change a little verbiage about here, there, and yonder, about what our logic is and how we approach things and what we do. We did tweak those just a little bit. It was recommended that we vote on those formally and make sure that they are on our website so that folks understand our protocols and also understand the chain of command and who you call, who you, you know, handle different things with. So I do need a motion from our board to accept the norms and protocols that we rewrote and revised in August. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I know we discussed and hammered out that day, any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Johnny, do you need an individual vote on that, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Superintendent's report.
Okay. Again, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. We had several events, Governor's School meeting in Danville. And we'll have another meeting soon. Ms. Givens has been chairing that, doing a great job. But we'll talk about so many things. We do have a little transition there in terms of leadership. That's kind of yet to be kind. We have a tenth person. So I want to thank her for Martinsville that force. We had a great meeting at the Virginia Museum of Natural History. A lot of events are coming. I can't really wait till they do a lot of building. And there's going to be a lot of construction there in terms of new parts of the museum. They have a lot of visitation. This year's been one of the highest visitation rates they've ever had. Of course, you can't help but notice when they have the dinosaurs out. That's when streets are blocked and kids are everywhere. But I want to thank they're an excellent partner to us, the Virginia Museum of Natural History, for the programs that they bring into our schools. We're really very thankful. Had an opportunity, was invited to go and visit a program called Just Call Granny. And that program, it's built run by some agencies, Martinsville, Henry County. And we help grandparents. We realized that a significant number of grandparents are raising students. And a lot of times, they need guidance on things, or where to find things, things that they need. And that we're introduced to that, and we plan to participate and help with some of our grandparents who are raising students. I think that's, as a grandparent of mine, I think that's just very, very important. We're tending to sensory. Uh, we attended the Century Garden, really covered cutting. We really appreciate Abbott Harrison. That was just a great event, all kinds of needs to be here there. Uh, it's just a great day. Biggest paristasis I've ever had, Kelly. But, uh, it was just well received and, and well attended. And I want to thank several of you came to also look at your schedule. Um, we appreciate it. Uh, Angelique, Dr. Tally and I went to the Rice Track to see Senator Mark Warner. And we enjoyed, uh, this field by some of the incoming industries that are coming. Uh, his vision for Martinville, New York County. Because I think the word is true that without a vision, people perish. And you have to follow leadership. Just not looking at just the present things the way they are, but what, what you can foresee happening. And, uh, very motivational, it's about fifty of us there. And we really enjoyed being there from the, the school side. I met with Mr. Glenn Adams, the interim city manager. Uh, and I immediately told the members of the city council that I saw that he's a keeper. Because he talked about the working together of schools and local government. They are two separate entities, but working together, they can do a tremendous job in the community. And, uh, I liked everything that he said. And, uh, Travis Stewart will from some facilities tomorrow. Travis and I will meet with him again, uh, here. We'll be meeting every month until a permanent, uh, city manager is established. Uh, but my vote goes to him, even though I don't have a vote. I just like his thoughts of what he wants to do for the schools, uh, for the GM that he wants to, to, um, install here and the things that he wants to bring, the life, uh, because that's important. And, uh, the life things that he, he wants to bring in so that young people will come here, stay, move, live here. Uh, just love his vision. Uh, was happy to participate in the school board retreat, Charles Building. Enjoyed that time with the board. Uh, learned a lot of things every time I go, I learned something else. Met with P and H Community College and talked about their programs. But they're often a student. We have an excellent partnership with them. C program is still growing there, uh, whereas our young people are getting the first two years of their college education, books and tuition free. Students are taking advantage of that. Certain wish that was available when my kids were growing up. Uh, there was nothing associated with the work free at college. Uh, but I think it's a great opportunity, uh, to see program. And again, we thank, um, the president there, just doing an, an excellent job. Uh, actually met with the endowment board and, uh, the endowment board is planning some events, a lot of you have asked us, uh, when are we going to have our usual get-together gala? Uh, they, they've worked on that, they've been working, uh, on that. Uh, they're still interested in offering, uh, scholarships for programs. Teachers, uh, want to get money, piece of money that can be used on hands-on projects and other things. Still very, uh, uh, interested in offering those to every school. And I hope that, uh, as these things are solicited, I hope that every school will take advantage of this free money because it is a grant and you don't have to pay it back. And it could subsidize things such as your greenhouse and other, other things or other ideas that you might have. Uh, football games have been, we all, we really appreciate the band support. We had, I think, over a hundred members from the previous bands to play with our band. That was so cool. Uh, and very soon we've got the class of nineteen eighty-three, year eighty-two, eighty-three coming. Uh, they're heading this way and, and alumni have been just very, very supportive. And again, uh, it's been a, a great time. We have did some changes we need to. Uh, again, uh, looked at some things that we're using warrants and we upped our security, which seemingly drew a lot of attention. But we want our, our areas, uh, in New Pitts, Bay and County to have clear book bags and none at all. Uh, we eliminated book bags. We just want our, um, CAMHS and things to be safe. And, uh, we'd rather be cautious than be lax. So I want to thank, uh, Mr. Slaughter for helping us with that. Enjoyed the Labor Day holiday, um, and right now the cabinet and I are going on a tour of staff meetings. We met with Clive today. We'll be going to Abbott Harrison. I think the high school is what's left. And we, we want to talk to every faculty each year, at the end of the year, to personally, in person, answer questions that they have. And that's gone very well. So I want to thank all your principals for inviting us and letting me, along with the cabinet, uh, come in and, and talk. And then finally, we're excited we have, uh, that the S O L scores were released. They held them for a while. We didn't know if they were going to ever be released, but finally they released it with a day's notice. And we're excited. We have many areas to improve. Still have to get, uh, students coming to school the way they should. And we're taking care of that. The truancy and principals, uh, you know, next week will be giving a list of, of students and where they are. Uh, uh, we still have improvements that we need to do in science and social areas. But I'm really excited that all of our schools are accredited for the past seven years. We've got a seven-year streak. Every school with some form of accreditation. And again, seventy-five percent of those have triennial, uh, accreditation. And they will be accredited for the next several years. And so that's because of your hard work. That's because of the hard work of the students and teachers. And we give kudos to you. We really appreciate what you've done. Uh, when we look at our Democrat to extend, as we saw through Kerry's, um, PowerPoint and around the state, we rank among the highest school divisions. And so again, I thank you for your hard work and so proud, uh, to be with you and leadership.
All right, matters from the board, Ms. Blackwell? Do you know anything? Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams? Sorry, I've got a minute, so.
No suggestion, I have, they said it was, uh, suicide prevention. If we can get down on the website, that would be, that's the only thing I have.
Kelly, can we do this?
It is the month of, if we just do it for the month, you know.
Just, just reminding people that it's Suicide Awareness Month. Yeah.
I didn't know about the nine-eight-eight, that's my fault, I didn't know about that.
All right.
Right.
Um, a couple of things I'd like to share. Uh, again, we did have our retreat and it gave us a chance to get to know one another as we have three new members. And it was very, a very good day that we got to share ideas and, and everything. And so thank you all for going, participating. Out of that, we discussed, uh, when we would do our school walkthroughs. We go annually through each building walkthrough and look at the building itself and what the needs are. And so we're going to do our first two tomorrow evening, starting at the high school at five o'clock and then going to the middle school. Where we'll look through at the building and see what's being done to improve the building or what needs to be done. So we are looking forward to doing that again this year. Um, we also, I wanted to take a moment and thank Kelly. Uh, there were over a hundred alumni that came out for the band, uh, on September first for the football game. The photos she got were amazing, the fact she could get the very first person marching into the stadium and the last one that was still in front of the office of the high school because there were so many folks. Plowed the, the alumni who wanted to come out and do that. There were several that didn't even care that they weren't playing with their instrument. They just wanted to march with the band again. And that's really cool. And that tells you what kind of band program we've had and, and their bond. Then when Kelly said she wanted to get everybody in the photo for the, the fight song and she asked how she could do that, she was brave, climbed up the ladder, got on top of the press box. So thank you, not, I can't say that many of us would do that at all. So thank you very much for doing that and, and thank you all. And it's nice.
I love Ray.
We know. Go Kelly.
We also, again, appreciate, uh, Kerry putting together that report for us under such short notice and having a lot of data for us. We do appreciate that and we appreciate what all of you do. That data would not look as good if we didn't have such hardworking teachers who, uh, heard from several of them who were appalled about the article because they know how hard they're working with their students and how much they do for their students every day. They have a rapport with the students from the bus drivers to cafeteria workers, to the teachers and principals. They all have a rapport with our students. That's why, you know, I think that if a child felt like they were in need or having negative thoughts, they would reach out to Dr. Worrell, they would reach out to, to the guidance counselors or even their teacher and say, I need help. And whether it's help about their negative thoughts, whether it's help with their schoolwork, they're, our teachers, everybody's there, all the way to the bus drivers. And I appreciate every one of you and all that you do to give us the scores that we do have, which allow us to be accredited. And we've met this bar and I know we all will raise the bar because that's what we do every year and know that that's important. So thank you all very much and thank you, Dr. Tally. All right, reminder of dates. Um, tonight we have a college fair going on in the commons at the high school. So I know Dr. Dixon's been in and out trying to participate with that. Again, our walkthroughs will begin tomorrow at five o'clock at the high school. I think we're meeting in the commons area, is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, and then on September nineteenth, we're doing something that we've not done since I've been on the board. We are having a joint city council, city school board meeting. It will be held at the commons. It is open to public. We're just going to talk and chat and build some rapport back that we haven't been able to have the last few years and that'll be at six o'clock. Uh, September twenty-second is homecoming at the high school. October ninth is our next regular school board meeting.
We're also, if I were mayor, presentation tomorrow, Ms. Waller, after we, two years go. So we're going to high school, middle school, then going down to city council. That's all we will.
All right, any unregistered citizen comments? Okay, moving along. We do have two communications. I will share those with you all. If I can get them open. He's in one this way, someone over here, Ms. Blackwell. Okay. Uh, with nothing else, then, um, move that we go into a closed session. Mr. Williamson, if you don't mind reading that for us. First of all, yeah.
No, they'll read that, I think.
Okay, you've already.
No, I thought you said read that. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, Lord, love it up. It's right here, sir. Uh, you need my glasses? It's right here, pursuant.
Pursuant to?
Right, if she's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, certainly.
Okay. Pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A, the code of Virginia. I moved at the board and convened a closed session for the purpose of discussion the following specific matters. Discussion and consideration of the evaluation, employment, assignment and reassignment of employees of Martinsville City Schools as authorized by section two point two dash three, three seven eleven A, one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Ms. Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.